At six thirty to order, it is six thirty-one. Items on the agenda, pledge of allegiance, visitors comments, a presentation for our, from our cap solutions relative to sewer rates and a discussion, abatements, superintendent request to purchase equipment. Water pollution control facility should purchase a compact tractor with loader, mower, and brush hog to maintain lawns and maintain access trail between Gilbertville, W W T P and Gilbertville Pumping Station would also be beneficial for tight quarter snow removal and loading equipment into trucks, also a trailer to carry the tractor between locations. Twenty-three horsepower Kubota price twenty-three thousand excluding trailer, a hundred less for gear, put ten thousand into the twenty-twenty-four budget to allow for the same, twenty-nineteen F two fifty will be paid for, so overall vehicle allocation will be lowered. Old business Memorial Day contract for caps in the amount of two hundred and adjourned. If you wouldn't mind joining me in saying the pledge of allegiance, the flag is behind Nicole. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. I can only hear me, so I was, I'm always afraid I'm gonna make a mistake. I always say I'm gonna put a cheat sheet up, but I never do, just to be sure.
Don't feel bad, I think I've actually made mistakes doing it, so.
Well, you have to figure it's been a few years since we've been in elementary school when we typically would say the pledge, so.
Yeah.
It's been probably more for, more for me than anybody else, but, so, I, we get the gist of it, so I think that's great, the intent is there. Next item on the agenda, visitor comments, is there anything? So, just to sort of set the stage for the meeting, we would like to continue to follow the rules that we followed, if you have a question, it should be directed by raising your hand and through the chair. When we get to the R cap presentation, I don't anticipate that we are going to entertain any questions from the board for the meeting participants, the, the presentation by Lori Stevens is for the board to digest, and there'll be the future opportunity for questions at some point, but we really would like to digest what Lori has and have the board have the options to, option to ask any questions. So with that said, are there any visitor comments relative to anything but not including addenda items, if you have something relative to any questions that are not on the agenda? Nicole, are there any hands?
No hands.
They're on a whole lot, so I can see all the practice spends at this point, so. So the next item on the agenda is Lori Stevens and the discussion or the presentation relative to the sewer rates and other, the information gathered by R cap. Lori's with us, right? Is she unable to possibly mute herself?
Hello? Yes, I wasn't able to unmute, I am now, thank you very much.
Hi, hi Lori.
Would you like me to begin now, Nicole?
Yeah, I can make you host, if you want to share your screen, do you have the present, do you have the PowerPoint?
I, I do, let me try to share my screen.
Yeah, first I have to make you host.
Let me know when that's ready.
Should be all set.
We can.
Okay, good, okay. So, my name is Lori Stevens and I work for R cap solutions, and I embarked on this a while back, and have been working most recently with the staff here at Hardwick. I'm, come from, R cap is the Rural Community Assistance Partnership, and we're throughout the country, but I come from R cap solutions, which is in the northeast, and it also encompasses the Virgin Islands and Puerto Rico. We're talking about the proposed projects, it's a construction of the Hardwick Road Pumping Station and upgrades to the collection system, which was project one or part of the first project, Gilbertville Water Pollution Control Facility, and then the Wheelwright Water Pollution Control Facility. The proposed project funding in, comes from a lot of different sources, this community is very fortunate to be able to get some loan and grant monies that are available, the loan money is five million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, in grant is seventeen million and change, the P P G grant, which is pre-development planning grant, is twenty-two thousand, five hundred, state funding and five million, and then applicant contribution, seven, seven thousand, five hundred, so that's a total of almost twenty-eight million dollars. The background is, the sewer system is a enterprise fund, I'm sure most of you know all this information, but just the background in case you don't, the Division of Local Services, Mass Department of Revenue, has an informational guideline release about enterprise funds, and that's the number that you can access that, that's the one we use here. These guidelines provide guidance to local officials on the use of an enterprise fund under this number, to separately account from municipal services of a proprietary nature, i.e. those services provided to individual customers for a charge in a manner dissimilar to a private business. Essentially, the enterprise fund is not run just as a separate entity in town, it's somewhat different in the manners with enterprise fund. So, the background is, the United States Department of Agriculture requested R cap solutions to design a rate structure, including commercial and residential users. Prior to that, the Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, provided recommendations, they had a financial policy manual that came out in twenty-seventeen, and it set, suggested that you set rates sufficient to cover operating, capital improvement costs, and minimize general fund subsidies. And another document came out, is the review of the sewer enterprise fund in twenty-fourteen, said, consider alternatives to the current rate structure. So we took all that information and put that together to come up with this methodology. The rate study methodology would, we reviewed the financial plan and revenue requirements, including the budget debt service revenue streams, conducts cost of services analysis, review and evaluate different options for rate structures, and then with all that information, design a rate structure for Hardwick. The components of the sewer system, it's the water pollution control facility, you have the Wheelwright facility and the Gilbertville, and it is, unlike other towns, it has two facilities instead of just one, which that makes it more expensive, we have pump stations throughout the system, discharge points to the river, and the collection system includes gravity sewer lines, force mains, sewer manholes, et cetera. Financial requirements, the cost to operate and maintain the sewer enterprise fund, there's salaries, chemical costs, electrical and fuel charges, vehicles, tools, equipment costs, indirect costs for town services, and what I mean by that is, the services of the assessor, the accountant, for health insurance, et cetera, and then also there's regulatory requirements for testing, reporting, fines, and fees. So we conducted a review of the budgets and the revenue, we reviewed historical budgets for the past five years of expenses, compared year to year, project five years out, account for cost differences due to operational changes. So your two wastewater treatment facilities and the pump station, the two wastewater treatment facilities, the processes are going to change, so we worked with the engineer on getting estimates of what will be involved in the changes, estimate the allowances for abatements, we reviewed historical revenues, we set up a, excuse me, a financial management team to address issues from the Mass Department of Revenue. For past five years, we identified issues, concerns, anomalies. Then we reviewed the existing debt requirements, you already have a debt for the Gilbertville Pump Station, initiated in two thousand and eight, it ends in twenty forty-two, forty-year term, interest rate of two-point-two-two-five. The Wheelwright Plant, that initiated in two thousand and eight, ends in forty, twenty forty-seven, forty-year term, and interest rate of four-point-three-seven-five, and then the Wheelwright, which was initiated in two thousand and nine, ends in twenty forty-eight, another forty-year term, and that interest rate is four-point-two-five. Principal and interest payment for fiscal twenty-four was eighty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-five. That just gives you a feel of existing payments that you have, they're gonna continue for a good number of years. The future debt service, you're very fortunate, you have a lot of grant money coming in, the loan money is only going to be five million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand. That's a forty-year term, interest rate is one-point-three-seven-five, I think you're locked into that interest rate, but we can check with USDA, the annual payment would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine, I was directed by USDA that that is going to be split half to the enterprise fund and half on the general tax base. So the sewer enterprise fund has to levy betterments to pay off the ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine point five, therefore this should not be included in the sewer O and M budget, and I believe Nicole has asked me to present at the next meeting the information on the betterments, but right now we're going to stick with talking about the rates, but this is just very important to know that the funds, to raise the funds for the sewer enterprise fund portion, the ninety-two thousand and change, is not included in the O and M budget, because that is going to be paid for through betterments. So your future debt service is equals your existing debt service. The sewer enterprise fund budget, it's estimated at eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the estimates are from D P C, the engineers, they include the two upgraded wastewater treatment facilities and the additional pump station. A short-lived asset reserve account of sixty-five thousand, and that's mandated by USDA, so sixty-five thousand has to come out of the, the rates, the revenue from the sewer enterprise fund and put in a separate account annually, and that is building up to pay for equipment in, in the future. Indirect costs are approximately eighty thousand a year, now some, over the past five years, the analysis, we learned that some years the indirect costs were not coming out of the enterprise fund budget, were coming out of the general fund, so they, because it's supposed to be separate, the individual indirect costs were coming out of the O and M for the enterprise fund. That short-lived asset reserve account, as I said, is mandated by USDA annually, and at least sixty-five thousand must be deposited into this account, which is separate from your general fund, separate from even your enterprise fund. Indirect costs must be paid for the sewer budget, that includes retirement, health insurance, general fund insurance, town administration, like a portion of your assessor's salary, portion for your treasurer's working for your enterprise fund too, that's where the indirect costs come from.
Um, excuse me Lori, sorry, I had to take back host, I, nobody can unmute themselves, I just wanted to ask if there was anybody in the, in the waiting room, and there was, so I just let them in.
No problem.
I'll make you host again. I'm asking the board if they want to unmute.
Sure. Nicole, is it possible that you can make, excuse me, can Lori be a co-host rather than being a regular host?
I don't, I don't have a choice, it just says make host, it doesn't say make co-host.
Oh yeah, that's fine. She's just looking for some place to lay down. If, if you make me the host, do you want me to unmute the board?
I just did.
Oh, okay.
But I'll just make you host again, and. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine, um, okay.
You just have to share your screen again.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm getting there. Okay, are we up and running again, can you see that guy?
Yes, thank you, sorry about the interruption.
No, no problem, no problem. Okay, the annual sewer discharge to the river, the Gilbertville wastewater treatment facility discharge is about forty-two million, Wheelwright is about five and a half million, so the total is about forty-eight million, and we worked with Scott and Nicole on this information, uh, you know, and that varies depending on what the flow is, what the rainfall is, the inflow and infiltration, so the sewer depends also on the commercial residential use along with the rainfall. Infiltration and inflow, inflow is groundwater that seeps into the sewer pipes through holes, cracks, joint failures, and faulty connections, inflow is storm water from roof drains, foundation drains, downspouts, storm drains, cross connections, and through holes and manhole covers, et cetera. Most I N I, infiltration and flow, we call I N I, is caused by aging infrastructure that needs maintenance and replacement. Every community has I N I, and they do their best to address it as it comes along. The annual sewer use, we're estimated actually only ten percent from the, not the thirty percent, we estimated ten percent of the forty-eight thousand is I N I, so that's about fourteen, forty-eight million. Subtracting the I N I, we get to forty-three million, so the cost of service, actual cost to treat the wastewater, the sewer budget was estimated as eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. So, it's, the flow, the gallon is nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents per thousand gallons, so that is kind of expensive for your community, and that's because you have two wastewater treatment plants. Additional costs, other factors that affect the cost, electrical costs for pumping non-gravity flows, no matter how many pump stations you have, each pump station has H V A C, electrical, maintenance and upkeep, you need the operator going there, all of that, so that involves the site visits, additional monitoring and metering, odor controls at manholes and pump stations where sewage is concepted, time and labor for sampling, laboratory testing, identify and monitor excess loading situations, regulatory requirements, fees, potential fines, excessive maintenance requirements for the force main, which is why the new pump station is going in, and I just wanted to, this last item, flushable wipes, really is no such thing, they all have to come out of the treatment plant, dental floss, diapers, these all play a part in running sewer. Billing frequency, currently it's based on the equivalent dwelling unit, the billing frequency currently, you buy annual billing, so half the bill, half the year, payment is due every six months, separate charges are levied for if this individual inspections, identifying, addressing issues of odor, excess grease, et cetera, bills were sent, sent out separately for this. If anyone on the board has a question as we go along, I, I feel like I'm rifling information at you, feel free to ask, be happy to, to stop, if that's okay with Nicole. Typical rate structures, there's options for rate structures, so we can, based on a metered water use and a cost per gallon or per cubic foot, now, excuse me, there's not a, there's not a method for us to use the water use, which is usually the most accurate method, you have three different water systems, private and public, and some of the users are on private wells, so I was told it's not an option to use the metered water use. You can do a charge based on cost per unit, which is what you do, you do equivalent dwelling unit, you could do bedroom size, some communities say, well, if you have a quarter-inch meter, this is your size, if you have a two-inch meter, because you're commercial, you have this size, so that's, that's a different unit. The third item here is having a base charge, residential, commercial, or industrial charge can vary by size and use of facility, and what that means is, you have a fifty-dollar base charge, that includes either no flow or X gallons of flow, and then you go a cost per unit. You can have a loading factor, which is a multiplication factor to, for excess charges due to B O D, biological oxygen demand, T S S, total suspended solids, D O, dissolved oxygen, or P H, or odor control. Having a loading factor really means you have to have like an industrial pretreatment program, because you can't say, ah, I think this facility has more grease than that one, so I'm gonna say it's X number of dollars, you would need to test that and find out what is coming from where, and then those that have grease and oil charge this rate, those who have, so you, and that's a program where you're testing all along too, so we, we talked about maybe in the future you may want to do that, and that would affect more your, your commercial or industrial facilities, not your, your residential. And then some communities use a tiered approach, so your base charge gets you, you know, the first thousand gallons or the first hundred cubic feet has one charge, and after that has a, a higher charge, if you want to discourage a lot of use. So those are options, we looked at those. The current rate structure, we said, is based on equivalent dwelling units, hundred, seven-hundred-and-ten E D U's on the twenty-twenty cycle. This, we found a little bit surprising that one E D U was calculated as thirty-two thousand, nine hundred gallons, which is annually ninety gallons per day for household, which is a lot lower than is expected, it's well below the generally acceptable flow estimations, and if you take this flow, multiply it, but these seven-hundred-and-ten E D U's, so in twenty-twenty, that only calculates out to twenty-three million gallons, and I don't know if you guys recall in the previous slide, you're dealing about forty-three million gallons, so you're not encompassing all the flow that's going through the treatment plant. So it doesn't, just because the flow went up, I'm not saying that the rates are gonna go up twice as much, what I'm saying is, it doesn't tie actually to the flow that's going through the plant. Okay, so, we wanted to make a rate structure based on, this is how many gallons, this is how much cost to treat per gallon, you calculate that, and we get a cost per gallon, and that way we know residential, commercial, industrial, you're, you're paying the same cost per gallon, essentially. So, this exercise made us learn that the existing method does not account for all the flow through the treatment plant. So we embarked on a cost per bedroom unit, this calculated un-metered flow is converted to equivalent residential units, in this case, a cost per bedroom. So, one of the benefits of that is someone in a two-bedroom house would not be paying the same as someone with a five-bedroom house. We used the assessor's information, the bedrooms were enumerated, the number of bedrooms per unit, but we cut off a max per bedroom unit of four, so in other words, if you have seven bedrooms, you're only counted for four bedrooms, so if you have a two-bedroom house, you're calculated two bedrooms, three-bedroom house, four-bedroom house, if you're a duplex and you have four bedrooms in each side, that would be four per side, that's eight. Per bedroom units, max bedrooms, a single-family home would be a four-bedroom max, duplex went over that, a four-family, sixteen bedroom max is four each. The metered flow, any sewer flow that is already metered will pay a cost per gallon, and this cost per gallon is the same calculated cost that a residential unit would pay, cost per gallon, based on how we calculate the gallons. Now the flow are, are, because it is not metered, it's based on the Code of Massachusetts Regulation, C M R three-ten, section fifteen, the State Environmental Code Title Five, standard requirements for siting, construction, inspection, upgrade, and expansion of onsite sewage treatment and disposal systems, it's referred to Title Five. So the Title Five flows were used, but Title Five flows are used to estimate the construction of a onsite septic system, so we took the Title Five flows and reduced it by seventy percent, because we thought Title Five are, they're taking into account, we need a big enough septic system that we're not polluting the environment, so there's, is factor in that for safety. So the initial flow calculations, we use Title Five, which is a hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom, we adjusted the flows to seventy percent, so it's seventy-seven gallons per day per bedroom. Commercial industrial flows were based on Title Five. Paul Parker and I, we went out and we went to all the residential and commercial facilities we could get into, and we calculated the gallons per day, G P D, gallons per day, per seat for a restaurant, or per square foot for an office length, gallons per day, per bay or island for a garage or station, et cetera. All flow was decreased by seventy percent, so we used the same percentage factor, reduction factor in resi- factor in residential, as we did in commercial and industrial. Now, here's the first run-through of our flow summary. This was the residential flow, this is, um, can you guys see that? Okay, um, just said my internet connection is unstable, so let's see how long I can go here. Um, the residential flow for Quabin, um, the senior housing, and the commercial industrial flow, the Eagle Hills School, that's a five-year average, um, but, you know, that will be based on the metered flow, we know exactly what comes out of there. And the estimated flow was about forty-three million, and the anticipated revenue from those sources would equal eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. These are the historical rates. Just thought to see, you know, if, if you see, um, this percentage goes up with a couple years, it, once it went down, once it stayed at zero. So, any questions about that so far? I'll take back, um, host.
Sure. Kelly or Rob, any questions for Lori?
I don't think so right now.
I think it would be helpful, uh, just for me, because I'm a numbers person, Lori. This is Julie. So, so that's the, um, anticipated ra- rate structure, so it'd be nice for us to sort of see what that stacks up to what the current is.
Sure, sure. So, I, um, gave a report, um, it's about fifteen, seventeen pages, and I wanted to show you, like, I did a comparison table. So, my comparison table shows, like, um, under the old rate structure, what a one-bedroom pays, a two-bedroom, maybe a restaurant, and laundry facility, I just thought a couple of things, so you can compare what the rates are now to what we are proposing. So we can, we can see that, I don't know, uh, did you send those out, Nicole?
Um, I don't think so.
Not today. Oh, no problem, no problem, I can call it up here on the screen.
Okay, I can make you host again.
Sure.
Did I miss that, Nicole? Um, I don't know, it was a little while back.
Okay, oh, so I, I can just share, right, again?
Yeah.
And here we are again. Okay, so, this was the study, um, here's the table of contents, and what I did, instead of having you look through fifteen pages or something, I did an executive summary, so I, I'm not gonna read through the introduction, that was pretty much in the PowerPoint. But here on Table Six, is this too small, can you guys see that?
It's good.
You want that bigger?
It is, so Lori, we have, um, Kelly and Rob aren't, excuse me, able to unmute, because you're the host, can you, um, is there, is there? You just have to ask them to unmute, I think, and then they should unmute.
Can I do that, are you asking me to do that?
You, you can do that, as the host.
Okay. Um. Uh, I'm, hey, guys.
I'll, I'll take back host for just a minute.
Okay, who, who do, I got them here, I think.
Okay, Rob Ruggles.
Ah.
And Kelly Kemp.
Oh, Rob, okay. Oh, it's not letting me.
Like, if you hover over the right-hand side, there's three little dots, I can take back host.
Okay, wait a minute, um. To unmute, okay, there's Rob, I think I did you, Rob. Is that one good? And who's the other one?
Kelly.
Kelly. Sorry, Kelly, I'm, technical difficulties. Oh, I'm asking to unmute, okay.
Yeah.
Can you unmute now, Kelly? Okay, Rob, can you unmute now too?
I'm good now. He was, but I think he's all, I think he's all set, if he needs something, I'm sure, once Nicole takes back, he'll.
Okay, so, um, this is Table Six, and I have the, the next table, the Seven, but Eight has the same items to compare. So, right now, a single-family home is paying, I'm just gonna say one thousand two hundred, I'm just gonna round that off, and, um, a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, a three-bedroom, they're all paying the same. Right now, we have one restaurant, a fast food restaurant, it's twenty-eight seats, and they're paying a one-bedroom unit. We have a restaurant, it's twenty seats, it's paying four EDUs, so, it's kind of odd, but, you know, that, that's what's existing. So now, you're looking at one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, I'm gonna go to Table Eight, it's gonna show you the same criteria.
Yeah.
Oh, at the newer rates.
And that correlates to, that correlates to what you've just presented to us, Lori?
This correlates to what you're already charging.
Right, and the table you're going to now correlates to the analysis that you've just presented to us.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Okay, this is a, a single-family home, one-bedroom, it's five hundred and sixty. Um, a two-bedroom is one thousand one hundred and eighty, a three-bedroom is one thousand six hundred and ninety-six. That twenty-eight-seat restaurant, and that seemed pretty low. So, using the data from the Title V regulations, that ends up being two thousand eight hundred. That twenty-seat restaurant, two thousand two hundred. The laundry facility is eight thousand, and then the automotive garage is about one thousand seven hundred.
So you don't have a four-bedroom on here?
No, I mean, you could compare a four-bedroom to a four-bedroom, I'll, I tell you what it is, it's, um, it's gonna be this times four.
Twenty-two sixty-two.
Twenty-two sixty-two.
Yeah. Well, it would be the same as the restaurant bakery, right, the twenty-two?
Based on four.
Basically? Okay. And so, it's my understanding that we can choose to stay how we are, or to go to this, correct?
You could, or you could do something in between, Kelly. You could, you could, um, but, one of the things we wanted to do was have the rates based on something, it's based on Title V, it's based on, so it's not, you know, it, we're not making accommodations because we like or don't like this person or this place or this, everything is based on something that we can point to and say, this is where it came from, everybody's based the same. And the only exclusion for that, um, Nicole and I and Scott looked at a couple of things with, um, some of the facilities, like we said, four bedrooms, uh, we're not gonna go up to five bedrooms, or six bedrooms, or seven bedrooms, because maybe the, um, you know, medium households usually have a less number of people than two people in every, every bedroom, you know?
And also, we accounted for the actual flow, or, you know, most, tried to get more, you know, closer to what the actual flow is, unlike the original structure, which is half the flow.
Yes, that is, um, whi- which means that, it's not like you weren't getting half the plant, but it was, um, it was a higher a number for half of the flow. So, the flow calculated in a logical fashion, and defensible per the Title V regulations.
Lori, where does the seventy percent come from, maybe I missed that, um, is that?
Well, we, I, I understand, I'm a consulting engineer, and I know that the Title V regulations are to cite a septic system. And when you cite a septic system, you wanna use the most conservative value, meaning, estimate the septic system larger than it has to be, so you don't pollute the environment. So, I know Title V regulations have that safety factor built in. So, we want, we wanted to come out with, um, a type, a flow that is more logical to what people are actually using. So that's where we, we settled on about seventy percent. And so we said if the residential is based on seventy percent, well, then, it's justifiable to say, then residential and commercial are based on seventy percent of the flow. So we wanted to do it the same across the board.
Um, what about, uh, town-owned buildings that are on the system? How are those accounted for in the model?
Um, the town-owned buildings are going to be based the same, um, per square foot, like, your office buildings are, um, per square foot of office space.
Okay.
Restaurants are per seat, laundry is per washer.
So we, again, I'm asking all the questions, Kelly and Rob, sorry. Um, if, so if we have a vacant building, currently now, people are charged a minimum EDU, whether they're using the system or not using, they're, they're, um, charge a minimum number of EDUs, how is that gonna work under this model, the same way?
And that, uh, I want to, before I answer that question, I'm gonna go down to the end of this document. Where, these are recommendations.
Okay.
Revisit the, the rates annually, consider the industrial pre-treatment, and part of this also is, um, you, if you're going to adopt this rate or any other rate, your regulations have to address that. So, um, uh, you can have, it is a business, it has this many square feet, and you are charged a certain rate. Now, um, if you go out of business, you can deal with, well, you still have to pay, do you want it to have a minimum rate? But if you have a lot of businesses going out of town, and they don't pay at all, that you have to have a minimum, because Scott still has to operate the treatment plant, and they still have to pay the salaries, and you have to be, you know? So we didn't say it's going to be this, you're gonna pay the rent whether you're there or not, and you wanna deal with that by abatements, however you wanna deal with that.
Thank you, I did read this some time ago, so, um, you have to excuse me, Lori, it's tax season, so my, my mind isn't probably the, the most fresh it's been, so thanks for the, um, pointing us out.
And, and these are some, some recommendations that Nicole and I and Scott would hope that you might have some other ones that you wanna incorporate into this. But a lot of people, they'll go, they wanna do a rate study, and they wanna put that on the shelf, and relax, and get on with everything else, but it's tied to your rates, it ties what's on your website, it's tied to the rules and regulations, so if you don't address those at the same time, then you come up with things that conflict.
Thank you.
Buzz through this, I'm gonna go dizzy here on these, there we go, okay.
Kelly or Rob, do you have any questions? Lori, you might have to ask Rob to unmute again.
Oh, sure.
I don't know if he has anything he wants to ask.
I don't think I have much to add right now.
So I, I think, thank you, Lori, I think the purpose of the meeting was just to, um, sort of have Lori present, you know, what, um, you know, what they've come up with in terms of options for rates, and, um, or to take it under advisement. Um, this is one of several meetings, I would imagine, that will occur relative to the rate and betterment process, um, but it's a, sort of a starting point of looking at the rates. Um, I mean, a couple takeaways, clearly, what, our current rate structure doesn't support the flow that's going through the plants, and also doesn't support the budget level that needs to be there, which, you know, one could argue that's why we're in the situation we're in. Um, so, um, again, uh, maybe, Kelly, Rob, if you have any items that you think of afterwards that you want Lori to address, she is going to come back, I'm not sure what, I don't know if you're intending that that's next week's meeting, Lori, or a meeting in the future?
Oh, sure, excuse me, but Ned, can I admit him to the room?
Sure.
Okay, sorry. Um, yes, I, I'd be happy to come back, I, I would like to point out this, a couple of things that were issues, uh, you mentioned the two of them. Um, also, I, like, one restaurant was getting one EDU at twenty-eight seats, another restaurant was getting four EDUs at twenty seats, so it was not, um, it was not relatable, it was not justifiable. So, and that's one reason why, um, myself as a consultant, Archap solution comes in, because we, we, we can't play favorites, we don't even know anybody, we just, you know, what is logical and justifiable throughout the process?
How many, uh, Nicole, just, I, 'cause I can't think off the top of my head, how many, um, users we have on the system right now?
It's like seven-eleven? I'm sorry, I don't know about how many users, but that's how many EDUs we have.
Yeah, I thought it was a little bit more than that, but okay.
It might have just gone up by a couple, a couple houses were built along the line, down here in Gilbertville.
Yeah.
I, I had on there, I said, had eleven-eleven for 2020, so when the school came online, was that after 2020 or before?
That's including the school.
Okay. Another thing you may wanna consider is, um, when we, uh, we've been working on the betterments, and how are you going to divvy up the betterments, if it's based on the number of bedrooms? That is a way to allocate it, sometimes you can use, um, square footage of road frontage. So, um, the way it's working now is, is, you know, we're, we're looking at those options.
Kelly and Rob, is there anything that you, uh, well, if you can, um, if we can all submit any questions, or any items that we need clarification on, or questions that you might think of after, um, tonight, to Nicole, and Nicole can get those to Lori. Um, that would be great. And if, I mean, if, if we can, I'm not sure what our agenda looks like, Nicole, but we can talk about whether it makes sense to have Lori on for Monday, or if we've got a full agenda for Monday, or if she's gonna be ready.
What day is that?
The week from?
What Monday?
The tenth.
On, to, uh, oh, whatever, I, I would have to address that when I see what your questions and comments are, but I was, are you, do you meet every Monday?
No, usually just the second and fourth.
Okay.
Because Lori does have a standing obligation on Mondays too, so she'll have to get out of her Monday. So, we need, also need to give her some time, which is kinda why I was thinking the twenty-fourth, our next meeting after Monday, which would be the typical sewer meeting, the second Monday of the month.
Perhaps on the twenty-fourth, I could address your questions and maybe, um, get you the information on the first, um, your first review of the betterments. Unless you wanna just continue addressing this, so either way is fine with me.
But we do have to get going, do, you know, from.
Yeah, I would think that it would make sense to, to do, um, you know, any questions on this and betterments for that meeting.
I appreciate, appreciate that, that would be great.
So, we do have to keep moving forward on this.
Thank you, Lori.
I'm gonna take back host.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate your.
Thank you, Lori.
Attention to this matter. Call me if you have any questions, Nicole.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, Kelly, Rob, if you have any questions, um, we could submit them to Nicole, and she can get them to Lori for upcoming meeting. Anything else on that, on the presentation? Okay. Um, next on the item, uh, next item on the agenda are abatements. And we, um, those were sent over to us by Nicole, have you had a chance to review them?
These were on the last agenda, but the original application wasn't included, so, um, we attached the original application. Dale, eh, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna, this could be confidential, I'm not sure, so, the first application, um, we requested that they submit the previous year's electric bills, like, are on the, um, this application process and the explanation, but we did not receive them, they said that they do not, they didn't have to submit them before, and they're not going to submit them now. And the second one, the wrong amount is on there, they actually did pay five eighty-five fifty-three, which is half. Um, and the electric bills that I did have on the last agenda are on, is on there, the history, um, of the whole year. And I had given you an example of one that we know was empty that had the kilowatts right around ten to twenty for the year. These are hovering around between fifty and a hundred and thirteen, hundred and sixty-seven, so. Uh, but this abatement would be for one ninety-three twenty-two. And the first abatement would be for three eighty-four, forty-four, with them paying sixty-six percent.
But the first abatement, um, I think we were pretty clear last time that, um, Kelly, can you not unmute yourself?
No, sorry.
Can you unmute Kelly and Rob?
I can.
Thank you.
Um, I think we were pretty clear on the first abatement, what the requirements are, and whether, um, they needed to do it last time or not. Um, you know, I, I think it's a function of following procedure, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how you feel about that, Kelly and Rob.
No, I agree with you.
Okay.
No, I think we definitely have to follow procedure.
Right. If we ask it of, of everyone else, then, you know, they should be doing it too.
So, so based on that, um, we won't be recommending approval of the first abatement. Um, happy to, again, happy to revisit it if the documents are provided. And the second amount, again, uh, Nicole, what was the second amount?
It would be one ninety-three twenty-two.
That we're abating?
Yeah.
Um, I'm happy to make a motion if, if everyone's okay with that one, they have provided their information.
I'm okay with it, Rob?
Yeah, I'm fine. Am I muted?
No, you're good.
No, you're good, you can hear me. So, I would make a motion, um, to abate one ninety-three twenty-two to the second abatement, which I believe is fifteen Sylvia Street, no, that's the four ninety-one Main Street, Gilbertville.
Yeah. Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, um, Kelly?
Aye.
Rob?
Yes.
And Julie is a yes, so the, um, abatement is approved in the amount of a hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Thank you, Nicole. Um, are we, uh, with regard to, um, the superintendent request, Nicole, is this something we're tabling for a future meeting?
Yes, I didn't, uh, he wasn't in today, so I wasn't able to get the information. We were, excuse me, talking about whether or not we should buy it through the town, um, because then all the departments could use it, if we buy it through retained earnings, then only wastewater can use it. Uh, but I don't have the information right now, so I, I can't, I, it'll have to be at a future meeting. I don't even know if the other departments would wanna use it, so I don't know. Yeah, sorry. I thought he was being today, but it was unexpected.
So, we'll just sort of keep this as a place marker for, um, a future discussion? Uh, presumably before budget season is, you know, so we can figure out, um, where that's gonna fall. Okay, um, old business, anything to discuss under old business?
Um, I have, I have on my notes from last week, the Memorial Day, um, thing, and then the, um, the, um, we were gonna follow up with Cynthia and Mass Wildlife about a letter.
So, Memorial Day, I think Nicole reached out to Donnie, um, Martel about Memorial Day, and he made the suggestion that we sign the contract for the two hundred dollars, which is, it, it was the same amount last year.
And it's budgeted for, right?
I believe it is.
Yeah. Do you want a motion to sign that, Julie?
Please.
I would make a motion to sign the Memorial Day contract for the TAPS player and the amount of two hundred dollars.
Second.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will, um, call for a vote, Kelly?
Aye.
Rob?
Yes.
And Julie's a yes, so the motion carries, um, Nicole, would you please sign my name to the contract and get it out?
Sure.
Um, Kelly, the next item, um, so Nicole did reach out, Nicole, do you wanna talk about that particular?
Yeah, I reached out to the land agent, I ended, I emailed you all last week about it, um, you know, that the, the sale was going through either the end of last week or the beginning of this week. Um, and then Bill Zinni got on to kind of explain, right, uh, what was happening, that East Club and Land Trust is purchasing it, it's just easier that way through the state, they're taking care of, um, all the demolishing of all of the buildings, getting it into a good state of, um, you know, uh, so passive recreation. And then the state will be purchasing it and re- be reimbursing them for their cost. Um, Cynthia did come in today, but I was with somebody else, so I didn't get to see her. Um, Bill did speak with the land agent again today, and it would be nice if they have a letter of support, they don't need it, you know, it's all purchases happening, um, but just showing the town support, they even asked if Conservation would sign one, so, um, you know, eh, we don't have to do it tonight, but they would like a letter of support in the near future, next few months, if you would.
Um, I don't have a problem with that, I, um, I don't, you know, Kelly, I know you're abstaining, um, and I'm still trying to sort of figure out my role, but that's gonna be a moot point pretty soon, so you may wanna let the letter of support go if it's an issue. Um, but I, I will make sure that I resolve for Monday. Um, it doesn't sound like it really, again, it's not gonna hold anything up, it would be just, um, something to, I don't have an issue with supporting it, um, and.
They do, they do like the support letter.
Yeah, and I, I think perhaps maybe it's a conversation with Conservation as well, because it'd be nice if we could do a joint letter of support, um, that may be a way around, um, that or if we need to do our own letter of support, but I will make sure that I report back on Monday relative to, uh, whether that's something that I can, um, be involved with or not. Rob, do you have any thoughts on it?
Oh, that being said, I mean, that's, I'm good just waiting at this point, it's, a couple of weeks isn't gonna matter. They're, they're buying it regardless, so.
Well, I, I, I think, um, I think for all of the reasons that we said on the meeting last time, um, you know, there, there do seem to be some hazards there that, uh, you know, have been sitting there for a while that haven't been addressed, and are becoming a concern. Um, if you drive by there, you'll see the buildings are really starting to deteriorate, and, um, you know, that's unfortunate, it, you know, uh, uh, become, it becomes a safety concern at some point, so the fact that there's a plan to sort of address those, I think is good. Um, so perhaps we can put it on the agenda again for Monday, Nicole, and I'll make sure that, um, you know, let's just sort of keep it on the forefront, and perhaps if we can, uh, I don't know when Conservation's meeting again, um, but maybe just to, um, sort of see where they're at with, uh, a letter of support as well.
Bill said he was gonna draft it.
Okay.
From WERS.
Okay, because that's true, because WER has already issued a letter of support, correct?
Yes, they got their letter way before us.
We've issued letters in the past.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think it's a big deal, I just wanna be sure that I understand from my own perspective, from a conflict of interest, what I can be involved in and not be involved in. And I, I've made it this far without getting myself in trouble, I think I need to just make it through one more meeting before I get myself in trouble. Um, so, um, but let's make sure that's on Monday's agenda. Um, so with that said, um, just sort of under old business, there's a lot of things, I think, that are sort of in the air, um, that maybe haven't been resolved as a result of devoting efforts to other things, so I have sort of a list going. Um, I'll send that to Nicole of the things that sort of have been on my mind that haven't been accomplished, and, um, you know, maybe need to be addressed in a future meeting, if the, if the board decides to, to address them. Kelly or Rob, anything else? Can we also, um, under old business, under the ARPA funding, Nicole, can we make sure we address where we're at with the ARPA funding? And it seems like there's some corrections we need to do, can we try to get that on Monday's meeting, just in the discussion of that?
Sure.
I just don't wanna let that go, that's sort of important. Um, the other thing for Monday's meeting, um, whether we discuss it or not, I'll make sure you have it. Nicole provided me with the five years' worth of expenditures, so we can see from a budgeting perspective. I will put those all into an analysis, so that we have those, um, just so that that's available, and also the current expenditures from our town accountant for the budgeting process, so hopefully that'll be a useful tool. Anything else that we, um, if there's anything else you come up with that you think needs to be on Monday's agenda, you can just email Nicole, um, so that we get it on.
Are we in person?
We can be. The floor is not in, but we can sit in the room.
I would make the suggestion that we're in person, then, um.
I would second that.
Um, and then perhaps maybe, um, I know it's sort of a difficult thing, but now that, you know, the, uh, governor has approved an extended Zoom, that'll be something for the board to, to think about long-term, how you wanna handle that, but maybe even just for Monday's meeting, um, we have a Zoom component, you know, it's difficult to manage, but, um, just as we sort of transition into in-person, the Zoom component, I understand people are really interested in, in using still, so. Um, anything else? I'm good. Okay, um, I think that was the last item on the agenda, um, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, Rob, yeah. Unmute him.
Second.
So, the motion to adjourn has been moved and seconded, um, I will call for a vote, Kelly?
Aye.
Rob?
Yes.
And Julie is a yes, so the meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-six. Nicole, we didn't, um, address.